All right, I'd like to reconvene the meeting of the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, February ninth, 2022. We will begin with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Do you have a second?
I second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. We will begin with board reports. Judy?
Good morning. On January thirty first, I celebrated the Lunar New Year at Leonardtown High School's Chinese New Year Festival. It was a wonderful event that included many games such as Jianzi, chopsticks and marbles, and Chinese handkerchiefs. There was also a rice eating contest that I painfully lost. Later in the night, we enjoyed several dance performances from all Chinese language students in the county. I take Chinese one. I'm actually the only senior that takes Chinese one, and I participated in a lantern dance. Other dances included the Fan and Kung Fu Dance, Lotus Flower Dance, Swords Fighting, Long Sleeves Dance, and more. Many people in the community came out to join the festivities and it was very packed. I was so pleased with the sense of community and culture sharing at the event. I definitely recommend going to LHS's Chinese New Year Festival at least once. On February first, which is the day after, I celebrated the Lunar New Year with my family. We just did some Vietnamese traditions to ensure our luck in the new year. Additionally, February is the month of Black History Month. I'm here to support SB one one six, SB one hundred sixteen in the Maryland General Assembly right now. Senate Bill one one six is Public Schools Inclusive in Diverse English Language Arts Development of Content Standards and Implementation. What a better way to honor the message of Black History Month year-round by ensuring that students read materials from diverse authors and are always exposed to a plethora of experiences and histories of peoples. I think SMCPS does a great job already of ensuring a diversity of English materials in the classroom, but this bill just further recognizes the need. Finally, this week is National Schools Counseling Week. I hope every student is loving the morning announcements this week. The counselors are doing a fine job, starting each morning with a positive message and the importance of counselors in schools. Counselors work year-round creating schedules, welcoming new students, helping seniors apply to college, and addressing the emotional needs of their students, and plenty more. It is a very honorable profession, and I am so thankful for all the counselors at Leonardtown High School and in SMCPS that have helped students and myself this past year. Thank you.
My wife reminded me about two weeks ago that there was a sort of a local antiques roadshow being held at the museum in Colton's Point. So I looked in my safe and I found an artifact that I didn't realize was so valuable. And it was handed down from one of my grandfathers that was in the Revolution. He was in the Second New York Regiment, and this document here was sent to Mr. John Wheeler. I don't know who he is, so I really didn't pay much attention to it. Well, it's a, the document is written by George Washington, and it reads, "His Excellency George Washington, Esquire, General and Commander, Chief of the Forces of the United States of America." It was written in seventeen eighty-three, right before the Treaty of Paris, and that's when most of the soldiers were given discharge papers. And this is what, this is, a discharge paper given to a John Wheeler who I don't know, but probably my grandfather knew. So I've, it's been handed down for two centuries, and it was in my safe, and I never really thought it was worth much. So I went to the roadshow, and sure enough, George Washington's signature. I didn't recognize it. And it is a discharge paper to Mr. John Wheeler, and I didn't know if there's any value to it. And he said it's worth thousands of dollars. So here I've got all this money in my, in my safe, and I didn't realize that. But I probably won't sell it. I'll try to find out who the descendants are of John Wheeler and then give it to him. But the moral of the story is, when you go to Grandma's house on Easter, the first thing you do is go up, go up to the attic or down the basement, start looking around, because there's these wonderful things that are still around that people, these are treasures that people can find.
Go ahead, Rita. Tell that.
I, sorry, I can't top that. So on Monday, Ms. Allen and myself attended a Legislative Mabe Meeting, and during that time, we went over different bills that the legislator up in Annapolis will be presenting. It's either in committee or coming out of committee to be voted on. And the things that we went over was all to do with education. So it was, it was a great discussion because like for some of the things I might have had a mindset on, like say, maybe I'm opposed to it, but some people from other counties brought up, like say, what, maybe why they were for this piece of legislation. So it was very informative, and I don't know if Ms. Allen will expand on that, but it was, it was, it was good meeting.
Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, I have a couple of things really quickly. First of all, congratulations to the Leonardtown High School Swimming Boys and Girls Team. They are smack champions. So I think their last meet was Friday night, so they sealed the deal, so to speak. At Chopticon, Trey Cadco earned his one hundredth win in wrestling, so congratulations to him. I'm going to send a shout-out to all of the bus drivers this morning who battled the freezing frog that apparently came across everyone's alert. I know north into the county, you really couldn't see more than a few feet in front of you. So, you know, thank you for all of them being diligent, and I'm sure it was extremely stressful getting everyone to their destinations this morning. Two more quick things. Let's see, last week, there was a panel before the Ways and Means Committee on School Resource Officers in the state of Maryland. The Maryland Center for School Safety made up a panel. John Woolams, who is the lobbyist for Mabe, and myself made up a panel. There was a panel from the Public Defender's Office, and then another panel from a advocate for justice group that I can't think of the name right now. So it was ninety minutes of discussions about SROs. My testimony or my comments centered on the MOU that we have, which apparently is the driving factor, and it's, the committee was concerned it was not standardized across the state, and I guess some of the MOUs are not quite as detailed as what ours are. So hats off to Dr. Smith and Sheriff Cameron, who have had one, you know, running for a lot of years. There doesn't seem to be an SRO structure at a lot of the schools that we have. So once again, hats off to St. Mary's County. Also, it doesn't seem to be some type of working relationship between the superintendent, the sheriff, and the Health Department, so, which, you know, another, another advocate for, or plus for us in that column. And also just the overall training of our staff and our administrators. The Public Defender's Office did give several instances of where the use of force was probably, in their eyes, excessive, and if you had an administrator who had been trained and understood what the child was going through, then that might not have happened. So it was, you know, it was a good presentation on all sides. And then finally, Monday, we had a school safety meeting, because I serve on that advisory board. So they're looking for to prioritize items going forward over the next few years, since the Safe to Learn Act has been in place since twenty eighteen. You know, what are the next steps? So that has, it's been a lot of Zoom calls over the past seven days, so, and we will see how everything turns out. So with that, on to Mrs. Washington.
Thank you. You can see that we are very busy, board members and the whole school system. We are still working very hard. I attended the Virtual Maryland Association of Boards of Education Conference Planning Committee. Our annual conference will be scheduled October fifth through the seventh at the Western Annapolis. I attended the Virtual Business Education Community Alliance Becca Scholarship Fair. Scholarships are provided in the following areas: art, business, education, healthcare, STEM, trades, and general. One hundred and thirty scholarships will be given out, thanks to Dr. Bob Schaller, Mark Smith, Christine Bergmark, Carleen Blondell, SMCPS College and Career Center counselors, and the many scholarship sponsors. Also, I attended the in-person Chinese New Year that was held at Leonardtown High School. The program included food, performances, games, and competitions, thanks to Ms. Chen, Chinese language teacher, Chinese classes and clubs, and the NCHS. The festivities concluded with fifteen different performances performed by the students in the auditorium. Okay, I lost my spot. One moment.
Nope, you're gonna have to wing it, Mary. Here.
Yep, here it is.
Just click there.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, my good friend. Then I attended the Virtual Conscious Discipline Family Engagement Workshop facilitated by Ms. Amy Spidey. Over thirty participants were present, and they asked their questions, and they got an instant response from her. It was an interactive session, very interesting, thanks to Dr. Kelly Hall, Dr. Adams, Mrs. Trey Hearn, and the Department of Equity Engagement and Equity Access Staff. Then, last night, there was the Virtual When Dating Hurts, a conversation on dating and domestic violence. That was a one and a half hour virtual meeting. The guest speaker was Bill Mitchell, who authored a book by the same name, and Bill has firsthand experience because his daughter was killed during a dating domestic violence situation. And I took a lot of notes. It was very informative, and the key thing, he wanted us to leave with is knowing what are the signs, what do we need to look out for, because he believes his daughter would still be alive today if she knew the warning signs, and he and his wife and others knew the warning signs. And I will give you some of the warning signs of an abuser. Power and control. Checking your mail, phone, social media, email without your permission, putting you down in front of others, isolating you from family or friends, physically, financially, or emotionally. Extreme jealousy or insecurity, explosive outbursts, temper or mood swings, any form of physical harm. Possessiveness or controlling behavior, pressuring you or forcing you to have sex, usually well liked in the beginning. He will be your prince charming, like, this is unbelievable. This guy is great. But that will change. Emotionally abusive, physically abusive outside of others, barriers to previous association, creates a us but versus them situation with your family and friends. And the ultimate goal is to have one-on-one relationship with you only, and then he's going to turn to that charming person again. And as I say, he starts out as prince charming. There's isolation, threat of violence, actual violence, strangulation, kicking your pets, convincing apology, oh, I didn't mean it, I failed my test in school, or I got cut from the team, or you made me do it. And he talked about, don't think that it won't happen to you. Don't think it won't happen to somebody you love. It happens to one out of three women. It doesn't matter how educated you are, how good-looking you are, how smart you are, how much money you have. It can happen to anyone. So be prepared and know the signs. Because it is something that happens behind closed doors. He also, say, if you detect it, what should you do? If you see this happening with your friend? We have counselors in our school, and this is a perfect time that this was held, because this is school counselor's week. Students can talk to their counselor. They can talk to a friend, a teacher, the principal, anybody, and let somebody know what happened, because you have to have an exit plan for leaving this person. You just can't leave. That's when the danger really happens. And what are we to do? We are to listen. And I see Mr. Wyatt in the audience, and he brought Bill Mitchell to St. Mary's County Public Schools, I guess it was three years ago or so, and he talked to the students during the zero lunch period, and I was there. Then they had evening session for the parents. So we're doing everything we can in this school system, keep our students, staff, and administration, everybody safe. He talked about what constitutes a healthy relationship and unhealthy relationship, who the abusers are, and how abuse is a learned behavior. And he talked about how breaking up is dangerous. And if you need help, you can also call the Domestic Violence Hotline. It was an excellent presentation. I appreciate it. Bill, because he has to relive this pain of what his, of his daughter being murdered, so that he can help save a life. And the life he saved could be one of our family members, our friends, because we have to get the message out and know the warning signs. He broke up a little bit during the presentation, during the end, and my heart broke for him, but he is so dedicated and concerned about this topic. He does not want anyone to have to suffer the pain he's gone through. And this happened in two thousand and five, and he's still talking about it. And he wrote the book. You can get the book. It comes in E-form, large print, regular print, soft book, hardcover, anything you want. So it is very well worth reading. And I thank my Board of Education members for giving me an opportunity to talk about this important issue. I know I took longer than I should, because we got a long agenda today, but it is very important that we know those signs. And thank you, Mr. Smith, for making sure. We have plenty programs like this for students all the time, and maybe we don't give it enough press to let the public know what we're doing, but the students certainly know. And I don't know if they tell their parents or not, but we have a system that we care about people. Thank you.
Thank you. I did, I am the representative for our board on the Legislative Committee. We covered quite a few bills the other day. The way it's determined whether or not Mabe is going to support, support with amendments, or oppose or take no position on any particular bill partly comes to the Legislative Committee, but is wholly based on resolutions that are passed by Mabe membership at our annual conference. And so it is utilizing those overarching tenets that help us determine. One of the things, there are quite a few curriculum bills that have come forward from the legislature this year on a variety of topics, and Mabe has steadfastly taken the position that the legislature should not be dictating curriculum. And that will be the position that we continue, is that we don't support curriculum bills for that very reason. But it does, it also gives us the opportunity to educate the legislature as to what is being taught in schools based on the Maryland curriculum, and, and gives the opportunity to educate legislators and help them understand that perhaps though their bill might be well-meaning, it is somewhat redundant because it's already a part of the Maryland curriculum. And I think that's an important stand to make sure that legislators are told and reminded of, and reminded of, and reminded of, because this does come up every year. And I will say, there are some really out-there bills that, that deal with curriculum in, in particular, and some that I'm very concerned about. I will give, hats off to Mrs. McCourt. Mrs. McCourt, after our work session last week with respect to some unexpected happenings with the budget based on what the state is, has done and is allocating to us and to school systems across the state, they are using a metric that due to COVID is not, not a real number, and is greatly penalizing school systems, and will, will have a very, very significant impact on our budget if it's not addressed. And it's through no fault of our own, but, you know, you can't force parents to fill out paperwork, though, you know, some of it really helps us in being able to make the case for what is needed at the state level, and what our students are due based on their particular needs. And I really appreciate that Mrs. McCourt was part of our legislative meeting on Monday and really laid out the information about this impact of, of lack of funding based on the foundation aid and compensatory aid that was given in a way that really, I think, made it much more clear for board members and for, for some staff members to understand, because there are quite a few staff members that also participate in this legislative meeting. So thank you to Mrs. McCourt. Hats off. She never, never fails to deliver, ever.
Every single person on this staff is an educator.
Yes.
And, and we educate people on a whole host of topics, be they impacts of legislation, how pandemics have affected the social, emotional learning and lives of children, to how compensatory aid based on farms, forms that aren't required by law for the last several years gets us to a point where, at the end of it, through, I think no one's true fault, we find ourselves with fewer dollars than, than the legislation proposed three, two years ago intended. And so we all have great ideas of all the things we'd like to do to make the world a better place, but I will tell you that money drives everything. And so if you haven't considered how much it costs, you need to go back and reconsider what you're proposing. Before I launch into my little PowerPoint slide deck here, I would like to say that yesterday I had the pleasure of going down to the Behavioral Health Hub building that is being fashioned out of the PNC Bank that was donated last year in the middle of the pandemic. I went with Dr. Brewster and Sheriff Cameron. That is going to be such an instrumental location for helping people receive the services that they need and receive those services when they need them most. The amount of work, they gutted that building basically to the walls and are reconfiguring the entire interior of it to provide service to the, to the community and to, to all. So we have a great relationship with Sheriff Cameron. We have a great relationship with, with our health officer, because we do believe that you have to educate the whole child, and to educate the whole child, the child has to feel safe and has to be healthy, both physically and mentally and socially, emotionally. And so, wow, it's great that we have counselors with us today, because they're an integral part of all of that. So there are a lot of really good things to talk about. Spotlight on the James Day Forest Current Technology Center. They had their First Skills USA in-person competition that they, in like two years. So our kids did wonderfully, and several attained fantastic recognition, as they often do. Emily Gillick received the bronze for advertising and design. Catherine Thompson received the bronze for first aid CPR. Ally Alamir got gold for first aid CPR, and Ray Kane and Gabriel Horton got gold for digital cinema production. And so a lot of times when you see the highly polished work that the school system puts forth in their videos and Be Your Best You and summary of events, it's because we have a, we have a fantastic group of professionals working with a fantastic group of kids to really kind of help the next generation tell our story, because it really is about telling, telling our story. And these people are fantastic at doing just that. So Forest Center doing an incredible job. We will look forward to seeing how our, our bronze and gold medal winners do as they, as they move forward in all competitions. Mrs. Washington referenced the Becca Scholarship that was done virtually, I think, very successfully. We had a lot of people participate, and perhaps even in this venue, it's even more, it's easily accessible. The most important thing to recognize is that those resources are available. Go to the beca, S-M-C-B-E-C-A dot org website, and the applications are due. The deadline is February eighteenth, and that one application is sent out to all people with scholarships available, over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to help you in your post-secondary endeavors. The NAACP College and Career Fair, HBCU College, Virtual College and Career Fair is coming up, not this weekend, but next weekend on Saturday. They have put together quite a virtual event, a great many resources. There's going to be informational sessions as well. Please make sure that you go and take a look at it if you are a graduating senior. There's a lot of fantastic resources there. There are a lot of people who want to partner with you as you move forward. So that is going to be next Saturday, February nineteenth, from ten AM to two PM, because ultimately, we just want you to come back here and work for us. Come on, just come back. You can drive a bus. You could be a fantastic counselor. You could be in fiscal services and accountants and get to work with Tammy McCourt every single day. You could do food service work and feed everybody that nutritious, fantastic meal in the middle of the day. You can maintain all of the things that need to be maintained: paraeducators, pupil personnel workers, registered nurses, oh my gosh, safety assistants, school psychologists, social workers, secretaries, and my goodness, teachers. Boy, do we, we would, if you want to work with children, we want you to come see us. There are multiple teaching vacancies available right now, so please visit our website, go to, hit the big "Join Us" button, follow the, the prompts, and apply for St. Mary's County Public Schools. Boy, we, boy, we want to have you here this year. Certainly next year as well, but right now, we need you right now. So COVID data, there's all kinds of data. The data that we, that we track most closely is the data directly related to us right here in the county, and we have good news, not great news, but good news. We are certainly trending in the right direction. After seeing just a flurry of activity in January with over three hundred cases across our students and sixty or seventy cases across our staff every single week, we seem to be settling down. Moreover, the majority of the cases that we had, our, our children were lightly symptomatic or asymptomatic, or they recovered fairly quickly within a few days. The same for staff, although there are some staff who are persistently. It's been, you know, it's been a couple of weeks. So our numbers are trending in the right direction, and we are heartened by that, and we're tracking all of that, and we continue to talk with the Health Department and the Maryland Department of Health and the Maryland State Department of Education, because we are receiving emails from parents and community members demanding that we stop children wearing, the requirement for children wearing masks in our buildings. Let me be very clear. This is not St. Mary's County policy. This is not St. Mary's County policy. This isn't, this, this isn't the local Board of Health. This is law in the state of Maryland. It is COMAR thirteen A dot O one dot O seven, face coverings in school facilities. And how this became law was the Maryland State Department of Education got together and the state board crafted and approved this amended law, and then the law to and the state board crafted and approved this amended law. And then the law to go into effect had to go to the the General Assembly's Administrative, Executive, and Legislative Review Committee, who had public input, public consideration, and they adopted, they approved it. It is law. And it is law until July 1, 2022. So you can come to us, you can send us emails, you can protest, you can, but it is state law. We there's nothing we can do. There are off-ramps built into the law. But the off-ramps, unfortunately, probably won't be something that we see in St. Mary's County. The first off-ramp is that 80% of the entire population must be fully vaccinated. 63% of St. Mary's County residents are vaccinated. That number is static. It is not going up. People are not getting vaccinated. That number isn't going to change. So we're never going to hit that first off-ramp. We went right past it. The second off-ramp is 80% of all the bodies in a building are fully vaccinated, adults and students. Well, as of right now in St. Mary's County, five through 11-year-olds, they can get fully vaccinated, but only 22% are fully vaccinated, one in five. That number is static. It's not changing. People aren't going to go. If you haven't vaccinated your child, you're not going to vaccinate. That's a static number. And 53% of all of the eligible students from the age of 12 to 17, only half of them have been vaccinated. That number is also static. So we're never going to hit that off-ramp in any one of our schools. We're going to go right past it. Now, if it was up to us, the SMCPS employees, the people who your tax dollars actually pay for, we already hit the measured mark. We wouldn't be wearing masks. We're good to go. We'd be all in here not wearing masks because 87, 86.7% of all the employees of St. Mary's County are fully vaccinated. So we have done our part. Children aren't vaccinated. The community is not vaccinated. We're going to miss those two onramps, those two off-ramps. The third off-ramp is that we have to be in the moderate transmission rate. The moderate transmission rate means that you only have 50 cases per week per 100,000 people. So for us to hit that moderate level, basically, there's 100,000 people in St. Mary's County, there would only there would have to be less than 50 cases. So seven new cases a day. Well, just a couple of weeks ago, we were tickling 2,000 per week. All right, we're averaging about 100 a day. Last week, 635. So we're not, by any stretch of the imagination, are we going to get to the moderate level. So all three off-ramps, we're not going to hit. We're going to go right past them till July 1. So unless the state, the governor, the Maryland General Assembly, AELR, the Maryland State Department of Education, the state board takes action to unwind the law they put in place, children will be required to wear masks in St. Mary's County. So when you send us your your dissatisfaction with masking, we're going to send this information right back. So I mean, that's 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 where that is. This isn't, you know, there's there's all kinds of laws, and this is a law. And the school system has to follow it. We don't have a choice not to follow it. So that's where that all is. I thank you very much for your attention and that time. It's just, it's really hard. And I know, I know it is very challenging for children to not wear masks anywhere else but in school. And children see the challenge with that.
Dr. Smith, after July 1, is it by default?
It's gone.
It's gone.
Well, it it well, it's gone.
They would have to.
Unless, right, because it was supposed to be gone earlier in.
February.
In February.
It should have been expiring.
Right. And they extended it. AELR extended it until the end of the year. So and the AELR committee is made up of delegates and senators. So it's not it's not a it's it's a committee of both houses.
Yeah.
And it's both parties.
Yeah.
So.
The Maryland General Assembly through AELR enacted this law.
Right.
But if I was a parent, could I have reasonable expectations that after July 1, my children wouldn't have to wear masks?
Unless 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 the state legislature extends it.
Okay.
Yeah. Because if this was reversed right now, if they if they did away with it right now, I would come before the board. We'd have a public discussion about making masks voluntary. The reason why we're all wearing masks right now is because it is law. We decide that we already walked through what the metrics would be and who would have to wear them and at what level. We had a we had a practical plan that we never got to really put into place because the Maryland State Department of Education passed a law, sent it to AELR, and they approved it. So that's where we are. So.
And I I think it's it's all up in the air as to what will happen after July 1 for a lot of different reasons, not the least of which are some court cases going through in other states with respect to the impact on students with disabilities. So, you know, stand by. We'll be what it will be.
All right. Do you have more?
It's February. It's February.
Do you have more, Scott?
No, I really don't. This is that really is it. We have a we have a full week this week, a full week next week, and then the last week of February, it is an extended. We do have a three-day weekend and President's Day. Now, that is a possible snow makeup day. But we still have one snow day. So let's let's hope that let's hope that we have a snowy, wonderful event, maybe on like that Friday. That'd be great. And so that's that. So ends so ends my comments. Thank you.
All right. Let's see. Our School Counseling Week. Finally, Ms. Long, sitting back there patiently by the window.
Absolutely.
And I appreciate the sentiments from the board as well, as you're giving your reports on School Counseling Week.
Absolutely.
I'm here this morning with Ms. Rhonda Hunt, Supervisor of School Counseling, to share in expressing our appreciation for our school counselors. St. Mary's County Public Schools joins the American School Counselor Association in recognizing our school counselors this week, February 7 through the 11th, 2022. During this week, schools are expressing appreciation for the support that school counselors give our students every day. I want to call up at this time two counselors that joined us this morning. Mr. Wesley Sawyer, he's a school counselor for the ninth grade freshman academy at Leonardtown High School. And we also have Ms. Caitlin Davis, school counselor at Fairlead Academy. And they are new to our team this year. Very happy to have them. This National Week of Appreciation recognizes school counselors for being actively engaged in helping all students examine their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents. Our counselors work with students to address academic concerns, assist in building social, emotional skills, and facilitate students' post-secondary options. The combination of their training and experience makes them an integral part of the total educational program. This year's theme for this year's recognition theme is in school counseling is Better Together. This year, we are recognizing our school counselors for helping students to reconnect with school staff, their peers, and learning within the school building. School counselors at the secondary level work each day with students to encourage school attendance, re-engagement with onsite learning, and planning their future. And at the elementary level, the school counselors' work includes facilitating life skills lessons, strengthening students' social, emotional schools, skills, excuse me, and connecting families with school and community resources. So thank you, Mr. Sawyer and Ms. Davis, for representing all of our school counselors across the district this morning. Dr. Smith, at this time, in recognition of our school counselors and the important work they do, I invite you up to share the resolution.
All right. Big coffee. Thank you so much. Whereas the week of February 7 through the 11th, 2022, has been designated as National School Counseling Week in the school systems in all school systems across our great nation. And whereas comprehensive developmental school counseling programs are considered an integral part of the educational process that enables all students to achieve success in school. And whereas school counselors are actively committed to helping students explore their abilities, their strengths, their interests, and talents, as these traits relate to career awareness and development. And whereas school counselors help parents focus on ways to further the educational, personal, and social growth of their children. And whereas school counselors work with teachers and other educators to help students explore their potential and set realistic goals for themselves. And whereas school counselors seek to identify and utilize community resources that can enhance and complement comprehensive school counseling programs and help students become productive members of society. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of St. Mary's County recognizes February 7 through the 11th, 2022, as School Counseling Week in the in St. Mary's County Public Schools, and that all staff and students are encouraged to recognize this event and participate in its observance signed today by the Board of Education. And I'd just like to say, I have had the distinct pleasure of working with Ms. Hunt and with all of the counselors across the school system. They are absolutely the backbone of the of the of the chart, the path that our children chart through through our program and get ready to for post-secondary success. And of particular interest and experience with me has been those who service children in transitional moments of their life, such as Fairlead Academy and ninth grade programming and things such as this. I'm sure that you have been exceptionally busy working with students and parents and teachers and others to help everybody move forward productively. So just thank you so much. Anybody else saying anything? Could we could we take just a very quick break and get a picture up there with the?
Yes, you can. You can make come to the front, take a picture. We're good.
You to hold. Go get a picture.
Are you cold?
I move approval of the consent agenda, which today consists of the approval of minutes for January 26, 2022, personnel, teachers. There are no administrative and supervisory appointments at this time. So I I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. The motion is carried, and we will begin with the first of our action items, which is the Program of Studies, the Second Reading with Ms. Bachner and Dr. Jaffers. And I will remind everyone, we did have a hearing on this public comment two weeks ago. And I don't believe we've received anything at that time nor anything since.
Nope.
So.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Dr. Jaffers, would you like to begin?
Sure.
14 slides, Dr. Jaffers, 14.
So we, as always, we just a little of the context. This is something that's ongoing. We've had multiple meetings. This is consistent with Policy IGA. Our first reading was in January 13th. Second, the public hearing was on the 26th of 2022. And then last but not least was February 9th, which is today, Second Reading of our Curriculum and Courses Studies that is consistent with our Policy IGA.
And we reviewed all these with you in detail and answered questions on January 13th. So we're just simply going to go through the slides, but please stop us at any time if you have follow-up questions or have any any questions you would like before we get to the action piece. So the new courses we're proposing in Fine Arts is the Introduction to Music Technology. Another new course from a language is Completing Our Italian For Sequence. Adding the Applied Technology Exploration Course, which we call ATUX. We're also, although we have these courses as one-credit options, and they will remain as one-credit options, we also want to offer them as half-credit options in anticipation of the health requirement that's coming our way for incoming freshmen this year and in the next couple of years. And those courses are Financial Literacy, SAT Prep Course, a PSAT Prep Course, Piano Ensemble, and Percussion Ensemble. We also asked for a description change from Crafts 1 and 2 to be called Mixed Media Design, or excuse me, Mixed Design Media 1 and 2, and that correlates better to the curriculum and the revised curriculum they have for that course. We've also asked for course changes, and this is in relation to what MSD is requesting that we do. If you the Kerwin Bill is full of CTE changes. This is one of them. This is one we actually really, really agree with and 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 approve of this. So we will be sunsetting the three-year courses. They will still be with us, but they will be two-year courses. Students will have an opportunity for a third year in things like an Maryland Apprenticeship Program for any of these things, should they want to pursue a three-year option. That is still not off the table for them. In Diesel, Auto Tech, Auto Refinishing, Case, and Aviation, these courses will move from a seven-credit pathway option to five-credit pathways, which is fine. Most pathways actually in the state of Maryland for CTE programs are four-credit pathways. We've asked for prerequisite changes for percussion, ensemble, piano, and guitar to add the addition of also teacher recommendations, because students are coming to us with some skills already. So we want to make sure that they have access to courses and are properly placed. And again, that would also be for String Orchestra, Tenor Bass Choir, and Treble Choir. And again, they will provide more access. The example I gave before was in Guitar 2. They had have taken Guitar 1. And some students are coming with some experience, so this will allow the teacher to addition them and let them into Guitar 2 without having had the Guitar 1 experience. We also want to add some repeat credit courses to our listing for students. Yoga Fit 1, Piano Ensemble, Percussion Ensemble, Guitar 1 and Guitar 2. That just allows students to take a preferred class in something they have a real interest in, more than one time for elective credit. We also are asking for a course deletion in English just for American Literature B. And so we will simply have American Literature instead of an A and B class. The B class was originally put in place because we had to have a bridge course for English. And now that we do, we no longer need that, given new graduation requirements, we have no longer have a need for that course. And we're going to delete the Tech Connect because it's been replaced by the new ATUX course. And just to clarification, independent study courses will be independent study courses encoded as such. They will not be coded as an AP or dual enrollment course. And just to note that any courses or pathways offered at the Forest Center, courses with enrollment in less than 10 students may have may not be offered, and some courses may have wait lists. We just want to put that verbiage in anything coming out of the Forest Center and in our program of studies.
Can I ask, so I know that that's specific to the Forest Center, but you it's also across other classes in especially in high school in the program of studies.
Yeah. And sometimes it's not even 10. It's even a little sometime it could be 15 or 16 students.
I just wanted to make sure that it's in both places.
It is definitely in both places. Yeah. But we wanted to have the specific number in the Tech Center particularly.
Right. I understand that. Yes.
And then we have a recommended recommended action that the Board of Education approve this agenda item as presented, if there are no additional questions.
Anyone have anything?
Nothing.
Excuse me.
No, no.
An aviation, curriculum in aviation. I'm just curious, what does that include? Is that just like ground school or is it A and P preparation?
I don't have the course description in front of me. It is in the current program of studies, but I'd be happy to send it to you, Mr. Davis, if you'd like. The description is a couple of courses that comprise that at the Tech Center. It does run some years, doesn't run other years. And so I will send you that as a follow-up to this meeting.
Just just a comment. Commissioner O'Connor and I were real interested in setting up an A and P school where graduates come out and be fully licensed to do maintenance on the base or whatever. It's a very coveted license to have. And I just was curious if there's any thinking on that line about down the road coming up with a aircraft and power plant certification program there at the Forest Center.
I believe aircraft maintenance and repair is part of the curriculum for this course.
Are they actually issuing the licenses?
No.
Not issuing the license, but the certification.
But the experiences to gain the certification.
Right.
It's kind of a wish list on my.
[laughing]
Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Okay, may I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the High School Program of Studies revisions for 2022 and 2023 as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the motion is carried. Thank you very much. All right, next up, the school year calendar. We forgot to put the board calendar on the consent agenda.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I thought of it over the weekend.
Okay, so we are here to present the Second Reading of the school year calendars for the 2022, 23, and 23, 24 calendars. As we've shared with you before, this is a result of the work of a calendar committee that met over several months in the fall and survey that was provided for the community, of which there were about 2,000 responses. And of course, our presentation to you in January, followed by the public hearing at the end of January. The public hearing yielded no speakers, but we've had, I think, five emails. They were pretty, you know, I think there were two people, two people who expressed that they did not favor the extended winter break and three that favored it. So it was kind of split down the middle. So we bring to you this recommended calendar, which is the same one presented at the public hearing two weeks ago, that is, that provides for the first day of school on August 24th, 2022, for this coming year, and is similar in the 23, 24 school year with August 10th for the Chesapeake Public Charter School. The first day of work for 11-month staff would then be Thursday, July 28th, and the first day for 10-month staff would be Wednesday, August 17th, with the new teacher orientation beginning the week prior. It does provide for the full two weeks of winter break in the 22, 23 calendar. That would be December 19th through 30th, and students returning on January 3rd. The final day of school with the inclement weather days built in would be then June 15th with July, June 9th for the Chesapeake Public Charter School. And then, of course, then the final day for 11-month employees would be June 30th, which would be the same for the Charter School. I've provided this very small font I chart for you that has some key dates. I will put my glasses on so I can read it for you. It does highlight those same days that I provided for you, as well as the key holidays and the Chesapeake Public Charter Schools recess days because they are on a different break system than we are because they begin earlier. It includes Election Day for this coming year. It would not have the same in the following year with Thanksgiving Day, Thanksgiving Break, again, with the Wednesday beginning that break. The full winter break, as I said before, December 19th through January 2nd, students returning on the 3rd. The holidays of Martin Luther King Day, the Professional Development Day on January 27th. This year it was February 4th. That's just the one that we had last week. President's Day Holiday, which is a possible makeup day in our calendar, as Dr. Smith alluded to in this year's calendar as well. And then in Spring Break, we have a full week of Spring Break, of course. This coming year it would be April 3rd through 10th with a possible makeup day on the 10th, and the 10th also being a workday for 12-month employees. Memorial Day, and then, of course, the final day for students, which includes the three days on June 15th. There are also the professional days that conclude the calendar, and the Juneteenth Holiday is included as well as a holiday for staff on June 19th, but the students would be out by then. Our early dismissals are listed on the bottom. Similarly, those dates are, mirror the following school year as well. The calendars are very similar, so we provide this, these calendars for your approval.
Anyone have any questions?
Just a comment that I appreciate that we've gone back to coming up with two years' worth of calendars. I think that certainly makes it much easier for students and for staff to make plans throughout the summer, especially as some vacations tend to kind of bleed into the beginning of the school year or the beginning of staff needing to work. We certainly understand that that's a challenge to make those long-range decisions with respect to taking vacations, but I think this is one way of addressing that. So thank you very much for bringing it forward.
Thank you.
And on that same note, for all of our middle school students who are planning to play a fall sport, the dates for fall sports tryouts are already out. MAC has already listed them. So keep that in mind if you are a fall sport person because there is no exemption because you were on vacation and you missed your tryout. So just throwing that out there.
Please vacation in July or June or over winter break or during spring break. Those are fantastic. You're only in school 180 days, so.
Spring sports, you can't have a spring break either there, Dr. Smith, so.
The dedication of athletes and the things that they, that they and their parents sacrifice for their, for their skill, that's, and coaches and assistant coaches.
And your staff.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you so much.
Dr. Mar, Columbus Day, is that renamed?
The day is listed on our calendar as a, we have a school day that day. It's a two-hour early dismissal day for Parent Conference Day. We don't have it designated other than that on our, on our calendar.
Was that, is that a recent change?
That's the way we've had it listed for the last several years because it's a, it's not designated as a holiday with the school day.
Yeah, when the calendar flipped, that Labor Day was adjusted, we had to take it away as a day off from school, and it hasn't lined up with the federal holiday because it used to be Parent Teacher Conference Day, but now we have it two-hour dismissal. Because we didn't, we didn't really see the volume of parent-teacher conferences happening in person, even at the elementary school level.
And on that, even on our survey, we asked very, it was, they favored other days off versus that one.
Right, so, okay, may I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approves the 2022, 2023, and 2023, 2024 St. Mary's County Public Schools and the Chesapeake Public Charter School calendars as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you very much, Dr. Mar. Let's see. Our third item is the fiscal year 2023 budget. We have Ms. McCord. Here, you can do this one.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So before you this morning is the approval of the FY '23 budget. Loaded into board docs are a variety of documents for you. You actually have the FY '23 Approved Budget Book, along with the supplemental detail, along with the Essential Cost Changes forms that will be going to the county commissioners, as well as the planned use of the state aid money, as well as all the changes that were made between the superintendent's proposed budget and your approved budget. And in full transparency to the public, those documents will all be published, I presume, probably following this meeting. So the unrestricted fund budget, revenues total $254.8 million. As we've previously discussed, $3.8 million is shifting from the restricted fund over to the unrestricted fund as a result of some of the blueprint mandates becoming unrestricted in nature. So the total FY '23 increase of monies is $17.3 million, withholding the $3.8 million shift. Focusing on, just for a moment, the state, federal, and other funds, we see a $7.4 million net increase, and that, by net increase, I mean net of that $3.8 million shift. And the primary change, as we discussed at the last meeting, is the compensatory education money that is driving that $3.4 million overall reduction in the state aid monies. We've divided up the pots of monies into essentially two pots. We've got our state, federal, and other funding sources and where that money is going, and then we have our local funding and where that money is going. As far as the state funding, we're highlighting that those monies are being spent predominantly on those areas that are absolutely required. We have no flexibility ever, and that is health insurance increases, pension increases, utilities, bus fuel, student assessments, and textbooks. I need to share one additional item, and that is pending, and that is a potential reduction in state aid support for teachers' pension, which totals approximately $947,000. So I apologize if this is the first time that you're hearing of it. We just became aware of it last week with some updated DLS information that was published.
And just to make note, further note, the pension fund is saying that the reason they're shifting this burden to the locals is because their investments did not produce as much as they expected, so they can't afford to, my words, they can't afford the full pension, so it falls to locals.
Even though we paid three-quarters of a billion dollars' worth of fees related to the handling of all of our investments.
Right.
And these numbers were not included in the state aid documents that were provided by MSD back in January. Statewide, we're looking at a 50-point, $54.3 million decrease in state aid to support pensions, or a 7% decrease. And then on the local side, we're looking statewide at a 25.8% increase as a result of that shift, as well as the increase in costs.
So just so I'm clear, so is the $947, $947,000, is that reflected in this or it's in there, but it might have to still come out?
Yes.
It is not reflected in here, and it may have to be added too.
Okay.
May have to come out.
Well, I mean, come out of our budget and then.
Yes, right, yes.
Okay.
Because we're still trying to get some additional information because this is so.
I just want to make sure everyone was clear that it's, that it's another 947K that could come out. Okay, thank you.
So then focusing on our local funding increase, we are requesting $121.5 million from the county commissioners reflecting an increase of $7 million of recurring funds. There are two essential cost change priorities with use of those recurring funds. The first being supporting our bargaining unit agreements for COLA and STEP increases plus the associated cost of social security totaling just shy of $5.3 million. Additionally, the contracted bus drivers and attendant rate increases totaling $1.7 million. So the total local recurring monies, $7 million that we're requesting for FY '23. The essential cost change priority number three will be those non-recurring costs coming from the locals' use of fund balance, supporting technology of $2.2 million, $2 million in textbooks, and $2 million towards OPEB for a total use of fund balance request from the county government of $6.2 million.
And remind us how much money the commissioners have in undesignated fund balance? In other words, money that is above and beyond their budget and that they have, they have not determined a use for?
Let's see, last year's income tax revenues came in approximately $19 million in excess of what they had budgeted. Total undesignated fund balance, I don't recall right offhand. Do you, Dr. Smith?
It's in the $30 million. It's of almost $100 million worth of fund balance that they're carrying. Over $30 million of it is completely undesignated. It has no particular use. So just, so to be really, so if we could go back two slides. So when, when you're looking at a massive budget like this and you're, and you're looking at all the different, it becomes exceptionally confusing. We have state funding, local funding, federal funding. We have SER 1, SER 2, SER 3, all of this. At the, at the end of it, our unrestricted budget is built on the recurring dollars that we know we're going to get. There's a guaranteed dollar amount that we know we're going to get per pupil, and that's what we build our budget based on. What we've done with this budget is we've taken a look at all of our known recurring monies that we know. So right now, we don't know what we're going to get from the, from our, from the board, from the commissioners. We don't know locally what, we know that there's a minimum amount that they have to provide. We know roughly, within a certain ballpark, that this is the federal and state's funds that are available. So we've built a budget that goes through and specifically takes a look at the known dollars that we're going to get, and that's the next slide, the increases with the state budget of $7.4 million. So we know with, we are fairly confident that we're going to see an increase to our bottom-line funding last year to this year on the state side of, federal and state side of $7.4 million. Turns out, give or take, whatever the next. So what are we doing with that new money? Because everybody's going to be like, well, you've got $7 million, so you're good to go. Well, that $7 million is going to go into non-negotiable recurring costs that the system has to pay to continue to maintain the employee of 2,300 employees, the millions of miles that are driven by buses, the millions of meals that are provided to kids, keep the doors open and the lights on and all of that. And that's this slide. So that $7.4 million is spread across our 13 categories of things that you have to pay. It's just like if you, I mean, when you get, when you get your paycheck, you know, there are things that you have to pay every month. You have to pay your heat, you have to pay your lights, you have to pay your mortgage, you have to pay your car payment and your insurance and all of that stuff, all right? So that's the budget that we, that we know. This is the operational budget for next year. The next slide is the slide that we come with hat in hand to our county commissioners because they own, they, they, they're only obligated by law to flat-fund us, to give us the amount of money they gave us last year to give us this year. That's, that's the law in the state of Maryland. Now, they'll call it maintenance of effort, but it really is just flat-funding. So above flat-funding, we are asking the commissioners for $7 million, and that $7 million is going to go really just to employee compensation and specifically to enhancement of employee compensation. What we negotiated in a four-year negotiated agreement for all of our employees in ESMIC, ESMIC ESP, and SMAS, which everybody is entitled to a promotional step, which can be worth 2.5% to 3%, and a 2% COLA, so everybody in St. Mary's County Public Schools to receive a 4.5% to 5% raise July 1. The cost is $5.3 million. And we look to our, we look to the commissioners to provide the money to be able to pay for that. With the bus drivers, to take all the bus drivers and attendants and move them from a guaranteed minimum of 5.5 hours a day to 6 hours a day, and to move the salary, the hourly wage provided to the contractors to the top of the scale for attendance and drivers that we have, as well as the 26.5% on top of that for fringe, that's $1.7 million. So we go to our county commissioners and we ask for $7 million. If the county commissioners say the budget is dire, we don't have the money, there's nothing, the cupboard is bare, we'll give you exactly what we are required by law to give you, the school system moves forward. We aren't cutting positions, we aren't closing programs, we're not going to be shuttering schools, but we would not be able to honor the negotiated agreement, nor would we be able to provide the salary enhancement and additional money that we are planning to provide for, for contractors. We try to do this so that it is very, very straightforward, so everybody understands exactly what amount of money we're asking for and where exactly that money will go. For the non-recurring funds, yes, we're asking for $6 million, and yes, we realize that they banked over $20 million worth of recurring revenue that they did not build into the budget. We know that they have $20 million worth of recurring revenue that they did not build into the current year's budget. So it's, I mean, it's going to, it's going to be the same thing we do every single year. This year it is more. Usually, we go back and forth, and we need about $4 million from the county government to cover the negotiated agreement. This year it's more because we have a 2% COLA for all employees, and we have made, we have an understanding that we were going to give enhancement to drivers, attendants, and the contractors.
To be clear, that, that 2% that, that folks would get, the cost of living
Yeah.
would go toward the requirements of the blueprint for education
Yes.
to increase our salaries. So we either do it now, or the bill comes due later, and the bill will be much larger because the blueprint lays out exactly where teachers have to, the minimum
Right.
teachers have to receive in a few years of $60,000 to start. teachers have to receive in a few years of sixty thousand dollars to start. And we are at forty-seven and change, correct?
Yes.
Right now?
Yes. With, with a two percent, with a two percent COLA, we'll be at fifty thousand dollars by next, by twenty-twenty-three. It's a ten percent increase across the board that, that has to be demonstrated by twenty-twenty-four. And then it's sixty thousand dollars to start by twenty-twenty?
Twenty-twenty-six.
Twenty-twenty-six. A ten percent increase is about ten million dollars. And to get everybody to sixty thousand dollars when our sal, our starting salary is fifty, that's a twenty percent increase. So that's anywhere from, that's close to twenty million dollars. And with the original dollars put forth with the Kerwin Commission, if they actually gave us the money that they said they were going to give us, we're short thirteen million dollars this year from their projections.
Adjusted year one.
Adjusted year one. We were supposed to have thirteen addition, thirteen million dollars additionally that the state isn't, that we, that we don't have.
But if you talk to any legislature person, they tell you that it's funded fully through twenty-twenty-six.
Right.
I had that conversation on Thursday night.
Right, they'll tell you it's, it's fully funded and everybody should be able to get all the things that they're supposed to get.
Before I get out my sentence out, she'll go, it's fully funded.
For the life of us, we keep on saying, but that's not, please, please take the time to look at our budget to tell us where we're not, you tell us what we're not, what we're missing.
And that's where we are actively trying to educate folks.
Right, that's where we're trying to educate. And just simply say, when you put forward a document that says that you're going to give St. Mary's County the money that was in that, that was in that line, and then you don't give us that money, then we can't do what you want us to do.
And I apologize for keep going on about this, but I, I just don't think that the public and the politicians are absorbing the message. The law says.
Well, that one slide that, that Ms. McCourt shared that, that demonstrated what in August they said we would be receiving for foundation and compensatory ed.
Right.
And then the actual that we received so far in January and the fact that it's thirteen million dollar deficit, you know, that's, that's thirteen million dollars that you said we'd have in August that we don't have in January, and boy, that really makes this job tough.
So while I was sitting in the back of the room, I received a request to speak to DLS on Friday on this very topic. So I'll be, I'll have the opportunity to share that slide again.
So probably the next year's educator of the year award for St. Mary's County isn't going to go to a teacher. It's going to go to Tammy and her infinite patience with Scott.
And clearly, DLS.
The rule, the rule should be, if Tammy can make Scott understand this, she should be able to make legislatives. I mean, I've got to be your worst pupil that you've ever had.
Scott should be taking that, that personal finance class at, at the high school.
Tammy's happy she's wearing a mask.
All right. Does anyone have any questions? I mean, the, the point's been made, we made it in the work session. You know, we're not asking for, we're only asking for what we had initially, for what we have promised our, our employees over the past year and in the, in the item of the negotiated agreement going back to, what, January twenty-twenty? So, all right, may I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the recommended budget for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three as presented and forward to the commissioners of St. Mary's County for their review and approval.
Do you have a second?
My second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I appreciate the slides on the breakdown. I think, I think hopefully that'll go a long way across the street, so. All right, so let's see, we have a budget amendment for food services. I think we have who Tammy and Ms. Doran.
Good morning, Ms. Doran.
Good morning. Good morning again.
Good morning. So, starting with some background on food services and, and their finances. As you're aware, free meals became available to all students in March of twenty-twenty and has continued through the current fiscal year. The USDA provides a reimbursement on a per meal basis. And the USDA has certainly recognized that school systems across the state have recognized increases as a result of supply chain issues and operational costs. So they just recently provided, excuse me, an increase in January of twenty-twenty-two to all LEAs. And since the beginning of the pandemic, they've recognized a twenty-two percent increase in the reimbursements to the LEAs. So we do provide the daily breakfast, lunch, snack, and take-home meals to all students.
Just a little background of what has been going on with food service. So we have always provided breakfast and lunch to all students and we have done the supper and snack program. However, this year, we are providing take-home meals and snack to students, to all students, which has not been the case in past years. So in, in the past, we have, it's only been the at-risk schools that were eligible to receive the supper and snack. But with the waivers that we have right now, we are providing take-home meals and snack as well. So if you look at our daily average participation for breakfast, we have not seen that much of an increase since school year twenty, which is what we're comparing to because last year was not a typical school year. If you move to the next slide, which is our lunch participation, you can see that we have greatly increased our numbers year over year for our lunch participation. We have seen, and moving into this year, we had really no idea what our participation would be like. It is wonderful to see that so many students are taking advantage of the free meal program and participating on a daily basis. The next slide, you will see an even larger participation, which is just our snack program, where we did provide snacks to, like you said, the at-risk students in the school district. We are not providing to all students. So our daily average snack participation has grown, you know, in great numbers. And as you can see with the next slide, our ta, our take-home meals have as well. So not knowing how the participation of students would have participated in this, we didn't really know how to anticipate our budget.
So we are requesting a one-point-five-million-dollar adjustment. We're actually looking at, even with this one-point-five-million-dollar adjustment, potentially upwards of a two-million-dollar surplus for the food services fund. So the request before you is a one-point-five-million-dollar adjustment recognizing that increase in the USDA meal reimbursement and then the offsetting increase to the purchase food costs of one-point-five million dollars. Are there any questions? No questions. Judy, Jim, Rita?
Yep.
Okay, nope. All right, motion.
I move that the Board of Education approve the presented increase in the food services budget for FY twenty-twenty-two and approve submittal of this budget amendment to the commissioners of St. Mary's County for their approval as required by the Annotated Code of Maryland.
Do you have a second?
My second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion is carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Ms. Doran.
And I'm going to stay seated.
Yes, Tammy can go right into the financial report.
So beginning with our revenue report, on the screen you can see, this is a report as of January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. We have year-to-date revenues of one-hundred-and-seventy-two-point-seven million dollars, representing seventy-one-point-three percent of our budget. All revenues are coming in on trend. And then moving to the expenditure side. Out of the two-hundred-and-forty-two-point-two-million-dollar budget, we have encumbrances outstanding of one-hundred-and-twelve-point-six million dollars. Total encumbrances and expenditures of two-hundred-and-thirty-three-point-five million dollars, representing a, a current available balance of eight-point-seven million dollars. The one area that we're continuing to track is the special education category, however it is within budget at this time. Are there any questions?
Anyone?
No question.
No questions.
All right. Thank you very much, Tammy. All right, Ms. Schrader.
Good morning.
Good morning.
And now that you're here, I will have to just give you, I know it's a while ago that you spoke to the Maryland Center for School Safety on our program here. So I think, I think Frederick County, were they also on with you? I can't remember, but we were definitely better, so.
I thought it was either Frederick or Howard.
I don't know, it might have been Howard. We're definitely better. I'm just going to, I'm just going to throw that out there.
Well, we presented our programs in a much more comprehensive and.
No, we were better. You can wordsmith it all you want, Scott. I mean, even Dr. Arlato was, you know, blown away, so yes.
So, so thank you. Well, I appreciate the opportunity to present to you guys today on how we are trying to support the mental health and wellness of our staff, our students, and our families. We recognize that this is definitely a time of great stress and anxiety for all parties involved. And we have tried to really create an environment to support the needs as best we can. I'm a data girl, so I, I like to present information on, on how we are doing and, and taking a look at the numbers and, and how that impacts our staff and our students. Just to take a look at the increase that we are seeing, we know prior to the pandemic that we were seeing an increase in things like suicide ideation. That came from the CDC's Youth Behavior Risk Survey. The Mental Health America report that came out in twenty-twenty-one also showed alarming rates of suicide ideation in both our adult and our youth population, so much so that it's actually been mentioned as the highest levels ever recorded in the history of recording suicide ideation. So we know that the pandemic then hit and, and we started seeing numbers increase across the board for our students and our families. You'll see kind of how that has progressed since I came on board. I started tracking some of those numbers. Our CPS reports from eighteen, nineteen, you can kind of see where they were several years ago. Last year was a different kind of year. We didn't have as much face-to-face time with students, so that year is an anomaly in our data. But looking for where we are right now, you can see that in the nineteen-twenty school year, we had two-hundred-and-thirty-four CPS reports and thus far, we had two-hundred-and-sixty-two. So we are already more than what we were at the end of the school year in the last sort of regular year.
And CPS is Child Protective Services?
Yes, so as, our system is mandated reporters. So anytime there is suspected abuse or neglect, we are mandated to report that and that is tracked and submitted here. In addition, we are obligated by law to conduct risk assessments on students if there is any kind of indication that they may be a threat of harm to theirs, to themselves or others. You can see this trend has been increasing as well. When I came on board, we had about three-hundred-and-fourteen in that year. It, it rose the year we went out for COVID. We were heading to a high number before we went out that March. This year, we're already at three-hundred-and-ninety-four for the year. So our staff is doing quite a bit of work related to that. Anyone who has conducted a risk assessment knows that that is not a quick process. It can be short, but it can also be very lengthy in order to try to assess that risk of students. Emergency petitions are petitions initiated through the Sheriff's Department. And the Sheriff's Department has made the determination that a person is unsafe and needs to be evaluated. That can happen in the home, in the community, or in the school setting. That data was not collected for, for many years. We started trying to collect it in nineteen-twenty and we had less than twenty for the entire year for people under the age of eighteen here in St. Mary's County. During the twenty-twenty-one school year, we started seeing a significant increase and we had approximately ninety-six youth in St. Mary's County that were EP'd to the hospital. And thus far, we've had ninety-two through the end of December. So you can see that trend is increasing significantly in our community. This is also replicated in our adult population. And I point that out because we are a system of students who have adult parents. And adults who are feeling unsafe or who are unhealthy impact the children that we work with. Bullying reports, this is very unique to me, that the trend has actually gone down in our number of bullying reports since the two-thousand-and-eighteen, nineteen school year. That year, we had forty-eight formal reports made and currently this year, there have only been thirteen. So I think the work that our counselors, our school psychologists, our social workers are doing is making an impact. I think they're trying to intervene. I also see an increase in, in the bullying information inside of our risk assessments. So as one of the things that can contribute to that, we do see that inside of those. So just keep that in mind, that, that number may not reflect exactly what's going on.
Can I ask a question on bullying reports for two thousand twenty, uh, two thousand twenty-two? You only have one. I would question the, the validity of that number.
Well, yes, I agree. And you'll see up at the top, there's an asterisk there because that was the year we were out for COVID. So we were shut down for in-person for half the year and then hybrid for the remainder of the year. So you definitely did not see across the board in any of those categories, I would say, accurate numbers for that, yes.
Can I just ask one question? And it's going to be between the last slide and this slide. So let's say, reporting of someone that you feel is in need of services. If, let's say, one lunch in high school, right? A lot of the students go to different classrooms. So if they are having a discussion either among themselves or even with another teacher, does that teacher then take it upon themselves to report the incident? If they feel like, what, what training are we giving them to ensure that, you know, if you need a risk assessment on a student?
Yes, so we're going to talk a little bit about that in another slide.
I'm going to throw it out there as you go through this slide.
Yeah, but I will address part of that. So if it relates to a risk assessment, our, our practice is, well, our policy is we have to do that and report that information. So that information should be reported immediately to one of the staff members that can conduct a risk assessment. If it is referring to bullying information, that is not a risk assessment. A risk assessment is, is solely for base of risk to life or death of a person, yourself, or someone else. Bullying reports, that is a formal report that is filled out by the student and the parent that is handled at the school level, but those reports are filed here once they are reported. So, all right, thank you.
Can I, can I kind of piggyback off Karen's? Is what, is there training that the teachers and staff receive in order to, they themselves report a bullying incident or help the child fill out the form if they feel like they are being threatened?
I'm not actually aware of that information. I'll have to get back to you on that. Bullying is managed at the, the school level typically. Those reports are filed here. I'm not aware of the formal training outside of the beginning of the year where we have the trainings that we are all required to do through safe schools, et cetera.
Yeah, which, and the safe schools training does specifically identify all the indicators of bullying and exactly how to go through the form. And ultimately, bullying is then referred outside of the classroom to an administrator because it carries consequence. So it's not, you know, it's, it's, and the, and the forms themselves, they're, they're heavily detailed. You have to go through all the information. And moreover, it also defines bullying. So, you know, if I make an offhand comment that, that hurts your feelings, that might, well, you might consider that bullying that might not necessarily rise to the definition of bullying. So there's a whole, there's a whole, there's a whole process for, for all of that.
Well, you know, since we're going to have a work session after this, maybe we could kind of follow up more in detail on that.
Sure, yes. Getting back to the mental health and wellness supports that we're offering for students, you guys have seen this triangle before, I presented it. The same triangle applies this year. The virtual side is really focused on our virtual academy. Our EVLO students are I E C students that are receiving services through the virtual academy. Our home hospital students that receive the services through the virtual academy supports. We are, we are providing mental health and wellness in a multi-tiered system of support across the board at every school. I think that's just what I want to get across on this triangle. I'm not going to go into the details as you have seen this before. It takes a village. This is not one group of people able to. This is not one group of people able to manage the needs and support. Our school counselors are an integral piece of that. Our school psychologists, our pupil personnel workers, our behavior specialists, our grant-funded social workers, the contract we have with Center for Children at some of our Title I schools that come in, our school-based health centers that they are trying to get up and running across in the county. And then coming soon, we are going to re-implement our evening counseling free services for students that are enrolled in SMCPS. That is coming soon. In-person supports on Mondays from 4:00 to 7:00. I'll just go ahead and plug that. And some of the resources that we have that are supporting this, you guys may have seen some of these before. I did present this at that meeting as well. I'm not gonna go into each one of them, but I will take a look at one of them just to highlight that for you. We did create Google websites for each of these focus groups. Our elementary students, our secondary students, our staff, and our parents and our guardians. And we wanted to do that because we wanted to create a one-stop place for people to go to get all of this information in one place. And we wanted to wrap that information around in multiple ways. By looking at stuff for students, parents, staff, as well as a monthly newsletter related to a mental health topic of the month that is highlighted both in our Google sites on each of them, as well as the newsletter. And then we also piggyback onto that with our ANS trainings that we do. And we do a mental health topic of the month for our administrators and supervisors to help gather that information and get that out to schools. The staff training piece that you guys are asking about, we have started a process of getting more detailed training for our staff. Last year, we started our mental health staff with getting specific training in risk assessment administration to learn how to do a competent risk assessment. We did that through QPR. We are moving forward in trying to provide additional training to all staff as that gatekeeper training for mental health. So we're working towards that currently in identifying that source. We have done youth mental health first aid, offer trainings on professional development days, et cetera. I am gonna take a look at this secondary mental health and wellness page, if it will load for me. These are updated every month. Due to the increase in content that we are trying to build on these pages, I have added some additional sub-pages to this. February is Teen Dating Violence and Domestic Violence Awareness Month for us, so I'm gonna take you to that page, since we were just talking about that. And you'll see this is an entire page dedicated to that topic. So it will have videos, it will have links to websites and resources. And of course, there's a video that worked yesterday that is not there now. We'll fix that. Some information on gaslighting, some data and some facts, how it works, what does a healthy relationship look like, what does an unhealthy relationship look like, just what you were explaining, Mrs. Washington, earlier, some habits of healthy relationships, and then a list of resources and how to get support if you need that. There's a lot of support out there to help support students and our families. Just wanted to highlight that. We also have our School Health Council site, which we meet quarterly for. That page also links back to those Google sites. And then we have our Mental Health Resources button on our main website and on all school websites as well, that again, link, and will link you back to those Google sites. We provide training updates. I've really tried to focus on adding training for parents this year, too, on the parent page of topics that they might find of interest related to this topic, and plugging those in each month as well. And lastly, I wanted to highlight our social work teen mental health supports. We are growing. We started the STOP grant with eight mental health personnel. We now have nine grant-funded school social workers out of that program. And thanks to Essar, we now have an additional four spots. We have hired for two of them, and we have recommended hire for two additional. We hope to be fully staffed by the start of next school year for all of those positions. We are currently in our elementary schools finally. I am happy to say that we are actively starting that process. We also have two additional social work interns this year that have also been very important to helping us carry out those supports and services to students. Just as a reminder, there are, there's three paths of support by your school social work teen members. We service a 12-week aftercare, or a 12-week program of support for students. At the end of that 12 weeks, we assess the situation to determine do they need additional support. We don't just cut them off at the end of the 12 weeks. They, it's goal-focused. Aftercare, I definitely want to highlight, that is a program that we offer to students and to families after they have either been admitted to the emergency department for a mental health crisis, admitted to a hospital for a mental health situation, admitted to residential facility for support. We are also servicing our home hospital students that are going out for emotional reasons. We're seeing an increase in that anxiety and depression contributing to our home hospital population. That is increasing currently. And so we are offering the counseling support for those students in order to help continue that connection to school and also provide supports in an effort to help push them and pull them back into the school setting when they are ready. So that is something new this year. And then we also see students on a crisis intervention walk-in basis. I'm gonna look at some data, because that's who I am. Just to give you an idea, this program has been, this is the third year we've had school social workers in place. In our first year, they served a total of 561 students. Currently, this year, they've seen a total of 541. That is supersedes our goal set out by the grant. Total students in the 12-week program, that is the active, ongoing support that students can receive. In 1920, there were 231. This year, they've already serviced 270 students in that program. Keep in mind, this data is just secondary. We just employed our two elementary folks, and we hope to mimic this moving forward in that environment as well. Our aftercare students, that has actually improved a little bit, our numbers. Total crisis walk-ins, 798, and this year, we're already at 718. That number probably speaks to me the most. It just speaks to where our students are, but also goes into the support that our staff is providing for our students, and hopefully, they find that helpful. And then lastly, the total amount of community referrals that the social work team has provided to outpatient providers in our community for students that need additional support beyond the scope of a school-based support.
I have no questions, but thank you for this comprehensive report about what SMCPS, SMCPS does with mental health of students. So thank you.
The, the parent guardian mental health awareness, that really hit me pretty hard. I thought this was really a good, a good initiative. A lot of parents that have kids, they see them day in and day out. They may not see adverse behavior when maybe a teacher might, might understand, you know, that the child's got a problem. So getting the parents in the loop, I think, is very, very important.
Yeah. And that page also focuses on not just the child, but also the parent's mental health as well. So we provide two sets of resources for them.
My next-door neighbor is a counselor with the school system, and she told me she's overwhelmed. She's really overwhelmed. That's all I am.
Thank you for providing all those resources on there. And I'm glad to see that the school system is, is, you know, out there and making sure that the students are able to receive these services, you know, because the teachers and, you know, the people that are working with these students every day are seeing this, and they're able to provide the support or to get them to the places to be provided these services.
Mary?
Thank you for the great list of resources that you have. All a parent has to do is go to the site, click on it, and they know they have good information because the student's mental health is just as important as their physical health. So they both work together so that we can have students who are ready, willing, and able to learn. Thank you so much.
I think we all understand that COVID has presented some extraordinary challenges, and layer that with social media and everything that's going on. Great many stressors. And I'm pleased not only with the support that we're able to provide for students, but that this continues our policy and expectation that parents will be involved in everything going on with their students. And, and just how important that is. And yes, it can be a family dynamic that needs to be addressed, but it may also be that, as Jim noted, the parents don't necessarily see a behavior for what it may portend. So, thank you.
Well, I think on the other side, too, just, you know, trying to find help for your child is difficult to navigate with insurance, with, you know, coordination, with time. So with the entire team set up within the schools, it makes it easier that if you or your child do need assistance, it's there for you. And I think that's, that's, that's more valuable than, you know, than anything. So, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. That is it. That concludes our board meeting for this morning. Our adjournment
We would like to just share some, kind of go back about two months, when we shared with you graduation recognition presentation on December 1st. And we talked about us needing to come back as a next step as part of that presentation, the information item to you with regard to this policy revision. With that, if you remember, Ms. Weaver, you had asked us, and Ms. Bailey, you reiterated that you wanted to ensure that when we did make a policy and regulation change, we made sure we did our research about the class ranking question. So I'm gonna defer it to Mr. Jaffers, just to kind of share that information with you before we start this presentation.
Yeah, so that's, we've confirmed on the backend that we're able to, we can have that particular setup that you've requested, and we are able to do that with our student information system. So yes, it's all systems are go. Does take a little effort, does take some human capital, but we definitely can get that all sort of synthesized to reflect our intention with this particular policy.
And we also reached out to all the high school counselors and did a survey with them, and they are used to the process of actually asking for class rank as needed to fulfill questions made by scholarship, scholarship opportunities or from colleges. And they said they actually do that quite often through the Naviance platform now. So I think it is a practice that they're used to doing occasionally through Dr. Jaffers' office.
Yep. So I do think this is a, you know, it's maybe a bit coincidental, but I do think in light of the pandemic and COVID, we had been talking about this sort of change for years. I think this pandemic sort of set us over the top. We definitely see a lot of stress. I saw it as a classroom teacher. I see it with my own son and my own daughter. This preponderance on grades, and so we have to move away from that a little bit in the sense that it is about social emotion. And I think that when we talk about, you know, we want to talk about voice and choice for students. We also want to talk about social emotion. We feel moving in this direction, moving with, you know, to mitigate this idea of one person or two people to represent the entire class to a more of a global class ranking acknowledgement, this is where we would like to move. And again, the title is gonna move, and you can see the purple's been deleted. That's what is existing in policy, and we'd like to change that to class rankings and graduation recognitions. The purpose of this policy is to establish high school, anything in that sort of color is just addendums that we've added. So it's to establish high school graduation procedures for determining class rank. And, you know, we're gonna cross, cross out the selection of valedictorian and salutatorian. We're adding recognizing students who have excelled with high grade point averages and deleting for the high school graduation.
And just to reiterate, going back to that presentation made in December, the bans that we are recognizing students would be, any student group who've made greater than or equal to 4.25 grade point average would be our highest recognition, or summa cum laude. Students who are earning between 4.0 and 4.24 would be our next level of student recognition as magna cum laude. And then the next level of recognition would be any student making 3.75 to 3.99, and they would be cum laude.
And I actually have a thought on that. The University of Virginia, we did not recognize summa cum laude. It was with distinction, with great distinction, and with highest distinction. And I, just my preference is, I prefer the word distinction rather than praise, because, you know, we can, we can praise all we want, but these students have distinguished themselves through the effort that they put forward in their classes. And so I put that out there as something for consideration by the rest.
And that is, I just made a note of that, because that definitely can be our talk about when we're doing the regulation and making that. I completely agree with you.
So we're gonna blow up the valedictorian and salutatorian, and now we're not even gonna do magna. We're just gonna throw a whole new.
I'm just, you know, it's, it's not for me to say. It is just...
Start from now, Kathy.
It is just, it is just, personally, I feel that that, that puts the, the focus on the student's efforts, rather than what everybody else is saying, you know, great, great job. So, just me.
That's a good, yeah, that's a good question. So, as we move forward, the Board of Education of St. Mary's County believes that class ranking should be maintained and the addendum and made available to 11th and 12th grade students upon request in each high school, deleting for the purpose of transcripts, period. Adding established grade point average bans that Lisa just discussed will be used to delete, recognize students, and addendum determine those students who have excelled with high grade point averages, and deleting the determination of valedictorian and salutatorian for their, you know, and then recognizing these students at high school graduation ceremonies.
And the "and recognize these students" ad, I believe, should be in red, so we will, we will correct that.
I have a question. It says, class ranking should be maintained and made available to 11th and 12th grade students. So does that mean that even though you're recognizing graduation not for your rank, but you can still see what your rank is?
Right. That was, that was the point, because, like, when you finished your junior year, you needed your class rank in order to start your college application process. And that's what, we're just making sure that, that it is available to you at the completion of your junior year, because all, you know, all your applications are, you know, you start rolling with them in August forward.
But it's only upon request? Because usually, you can see it when you, like, when you log into Hack.
Just, yeah, just, so, you know, for the, for the people who aren't hackers, that's available on Hack. It tells you what your class rank is. So...
For people not like you, Judy, who aren't tracking.
But, but I mean, it is, it's available, it's available for students. I can see it in Hack. Parents can see it. You can see, you can see what your numerical ranking is.
The only thing I want to add to, this is really, that's a really good question. I know we've been going back and forth with real-time versus the lagging, because if we're gonna synthesize all these multiple experiences that we have at high school, it's gonna, sometimes there's a lag with regards to the reporting and the recordation of that experience. So just, just as everybody's patience, we're gonna reconcile all those, those experiences, but it probably won't happen in real time. Okay? We'll do the best we can. So...
And that's why it's real important that we added that students' apply request, so that if it's not real time and you need that information, students, and that's why we also made sure we put 11th grade in there, and that was a good catch by Dr. Jaffers.
Like, we didn't close the academic year until after summer school was completed. So for those of you who started your Common App in August, you might not have had that information available because it wasn't finalized yet. But you could still, now, in this case, you don't have to wait for it to be in Hack. You can talk to... You can talk to your counselor, and they can give you, you know, a rough estimate with the chances that it may change based on, especially since we'll be running summer school probably for the next two years as well.
I know that that's already been available with the, upon requests, because the end, near the end of junior year, I know a lot of friends or like people close to me, they were applying for internships, so we had to request for our ranking.
Right. This just formalizes it, right? So everyone knows that you can get it.
And we have to provide it.
Oftentimes, just the other caveat is we don't award the credit until you complete the course. So oftentimes, it just, it takes, you know, the full year for us to capture that experience and the recordation.
Class rank is only calculated when grades are finalized for the entire year. Formal.
That's correct.
We didn't make any changes to this part of the policy statement. The superintendent is directed to develop administrative procedures to implement this policy. We did do a lot of taking out of different definitions, and we did that because we, it seemed that there were actually even definitions included in the former policy that weren't part of the policy. So we cleaned it up and only left definitions within the policy that actually were talked to in the form of policy. So we left in class rank, and we did take out valedictorian, salutatorian. We took out advanced placement courses. We kept in credit. We took out accredited high school. We kept in grade points. We kept in grade point average, and we took out weighted grade point value courses.
So the expectations for evaluation, review, and updates to this policy will be reviewed and evaluated according to the Board of Ed of St. Mary's County Review Schedule and the federal and/or state law and regulation changes.
Are there any questions? Anyone else?
I have a question. How does this new policy affect, like, the academies who have their own graduation recognitions, like such as STEM or like, you know, the new policy revision to GIS where they have their own valedictorian, salutatorian now? Like, how does this affect that?
I believe we, that will be, that will be spelled out more in the regulation, but it's our thinking at this time that they would still have a speaker at the graduation should they have wanted to do that. And that's usually, Judy, what the principals do with those academies, is usually there's a speaker. Sometimes it's the, you know, a speaker for GIS is typical, and I assume they would continue to do that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
No questions.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
But again, just to clarify, right now, any parent or student through Home Access Center, when they go to their transcript page, and I, because I just checked, and you scroll to the bottom, it will give your child or your weighted, where you are for weighted and unweighted class rank. So it'll tell you that you are, like, so if you're Scott Smith, you're 399 out of 400 or whatever.
If you're in high school.
If you're in high school, right.
Yeah.
In 11th or 12th grade, yes. Yes. It will, it will give, it will give you that. The system just automatically does that.
But it's not there until after the year is complete.
It's, so what's in there right now is as of the end of last year, and it won't be updated until we finalize all the stuff for the end of this year.
It does not accumulate as you complete a marking period in the current.
How am I doing now? How am I doing now?
Exactly.
And just to remind people that while this policy will take effect once we pass it.
Class of 2026.
It is the class of 2026 that this will apply to. So it will be the incoming freshman.
It'll be my son.
This fall. Bingo.
It will be when Scott completes his 37th year in high school.
All right. Ms. Long, let's see.
All right. We have the bullying, harassment, and intimidation policy recommendations. Mr. Dothard was planning to join me, but they were a little short-staffed this morning at Great Mills, so he's supporting that school.
Teaching, you know.
Yes.
So Kerwin is coming through every single day here in St. Mary's County, because our administrators and everybody's getting an opportunity to teach.
That's right. On December 7, 2021, the State Board of Education approved the updated Maryland Model Policy to Prevent Bullying, Harassment, or Intimidation. It was previously updated in 2016. The policy has been updated for implementation in the 2022-2023 school year. I'm just going to say, just in general with the model policy, the most notable changes since 2016 to the model policy, revisions to the definitions that you'll see that we carried over in our policy, and also a change of language from the word victim to targeted student. Okay.
Wait, just one quick question. So all of the, is the verbiage that we have, and I'm only saying because we've had this question before, is it following what the MSDE model policy is and their wordings and use of those words?
Yes, for, yes.
All right. Just.
They were supposed to have presented this back in September.
I know, I know, but it was, it's tough when you don't have a model policy out.
We are using the Maryland State Department of Education's model policy to underpin and really fashion our own.
Right, okay.
Okay, we're done. No.
I mean, click, 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 go.
So Mr. Dothard and I facilitated a committee of 15 members, and you see comprised of school administrators, district administrators, teachers, students, parents. We had ISMAC and SMAS representation and also community representation. We met on January 18th, the 22nd, the 26th, excuse me, and February 2nd. And the charge of that committee was to review Maryland's model policy and our current policy and regulations and to bring revisions forth for both of those. As I go through, as I go through, obviously, these are the recommendations from the committee. The purpose, the Maryland Model Policy required every district to have a purpose statement, which we do, but the committee has opted to remove our current purpose statement and adopt the one in the Maryland Model Policy. So that's the change that you see here in red. That is directly from the Maryland Model Policy. All students have the right to be free from bullying, harassment, or intimidation. St. Mary's County Public Schools is committed to providing a safe, productive, and inclusive learning environment. St. Mary's County Public Schools should be places where students are surrounded by caring adults who encourage students to treat others with kindness and empathy while helping to build a relationship-focused, welcoming, supportive school environment, fostering academic and personal growth for every student. And, you know, when you compare it to the statement that we have, I mean, this really is, you know, our revised statement there, and the adoption is really what we see throughout our schools every day. So it just made sense to do that. When we look at the policy statement, I provided you the policy in total, so you can see, I know I had to break it down by slides, but when you look at the policy statement as a whole, you'll see in the first few slides, the only changes that we did were, was that language and the word victim to targeted students, because our policy statement is still consistent with the words of the Maryland Model Policy. So again, at the beginning of the policy statement, the change to victim to targeted students, again, as we go through, and you see the elements in this slide, it talks about within these elements must be, that is consistent, like I said, with what is in the Maryland Model Policy.
And everything in the black type is what we have existing.
Correct.
Right, okay. Just clarifying for everyone.
Yes. Again, consistent with Maryland Model Policy, and this is our current policy. And then the end, it's the last paragraph in our policy statement, it is the liability, the limitations of liability statement that we had. And we just, the committee believed that the statement provided by the Maryland Model Policy was just a little bit clearer, you know, and actually, you know, included the annotated code of Maryland, just to give a little bit more clarification and specific information there. Okay, so these are going to be the big changes that you see to our policy, and that's what you see in purple here, crossed out, are what our current policy shows as far as the definitions. And then as we go through the next slides, these are the definitions, word for word, as they are in the Maryland Model Policy. And clear, you know, I have to say they're broken out. Did you want me to read? Are we good? Okay. Yep, for bullying, cyberbullying. And then in our current policy, we have electronic communication, which we are keeping in. We are making just a slight change. It was interesting, the conversation we had over pagers, I don't know. Do we have, are they, do we have them? We don't, we don't? We took it out. But added through social media sites. Harassment and intimidation. And then section four, as always stated in our policies.
So go back to the definition of bullying, because they, so they, the Maryland State Department of Education has very clearly sought to define what, because I hear from people all the time, you're bullying me, I've been bullied, this is a bully, he's a bully, she's a bully, we're a bully, we're all bullies. To make sure that we're consistent, especially when we're gathering data from across the state of Maryland and comparing county to county, we all have to be working from a similar definition. And so bullying is unwanted demeaning behavior amongst students that involves a real or perceived power imbalance. Behavior is repeated or is likely to be repeated over time. To be considered bullying, the behavior must be intentional and include, one, an imbalance of power. Students use bullying to do the physical, emotional, social harm, and two, repetition. So we've had allegations of people, the parents have said, my child has been bullied because somebody called him a slowpoke. They were late in getting to a thing, and they said, well, they were being bullied because they called him a slowpoke. And it's like, well, while that may have made the child feel targeted, you don't fill out a whole bullying form, you go back to the person who said, you know, did you, did you mean to hurt the person's feelings for calling them a slowpoke? And go through that whole, like, that, it doesn't, you know, it, to be a bully, it has to be intentional and repeated, so.
And there's, yeah, in there, you know, in, those are those teachable moments, right? There's ongoing education, ongoing education with behaviors that pop up like that, you know, as far as what is bullying, what is not, or, you know, how to be a good friend, how to be a nice friend.
Right.
So all of that, oh, you know, happens continually.
So I understand, so this is the policy. So as we go forward with the procedures or.
Regulations.
Regulations.
Yes.
And I know that's on your plate.
Yep.
So two things that I would suggest would be, number one is to outline the procedures to report, because I don't, I can't tell you that they are consistent across all of our schools and among all of our administration. So, you know, what might someone says is a bullying form here might not, you know, warrant one here. And then even just to outline the procedures for the parents, because that's most of the questions I get, like, you know, and everyone throws it up on, well, no one gave me a bullying form, no one did this. So I think it just, with the increased definition that we have, if this goes through on this policy the way it is, I think the more specific outlined procedure, not even, not even just for the parents, but also just for the administration, so everyone knows what the expectation is if someone walks into your office or you get an email and says, this is what happened to my child. And then on the social media piece and the cyberbullying, then, you know, we just have to consider what the guidelines are going to be to reduce cyberbullying since the majority of it takes place outside of school. Right? It's that, you know, seven to eleven o'clock.
On a platform that's not ours.
Right, exactly.
I can't control what you do on your phone.
Right, exactly. So, I mean, and same thing, just so the parents understand what, because, you know, some of the things that happen outside of school is a parent responsibility to address and not, but yet they send it to us because it's a structured process.
Sure.
So, I don't have the answers, I'm just throwing out those items.
With, when we revise the policy, go back and revise the regulations, then we will go back and revise all of our training and training materials and our safe schools that we do with every single employee that they have to go through and it's signed, and then we will go back and revise every single one of our handbook presentations at the beginning of the school year that we give to every single child. And what you're saying is you'd like to see something similar to that with every single parent. You would like us to actually put together a parent training.
No, I don't, I don't even want a parent training. I just want it so, you know, rather than everyone, and I know Mrs. Weaver was involved in it, you know, blowing, or not that you blew it up, but, you know, she was tagged on everything in social media about it.
And it was 500 and some.
Right, that they, that the parents understand what the school system's responsibilities and/or limitations are. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Because, you know, then I have other people involved, and I have people, I mean, one night I had, I literally had seven text messages and screenshots of this is what they were saying about our schools. So it's, you know, and.
People are quite unkind on Facebook.
They are. But I mean, and it's not that the school system did anything wrong, it's just that everyone didn't understand what the process was.
You know, oftentimes when we're on Facebook, I feel as though we're being bullied.
Because they call me a slowpoke.
So along with Mrs. Bailey's.
Yeah, I mean, and I mean, I don't know where that, what that looks like or where it goes, but it's just, you know.
We do have a handbook presentation for parents as well, and we could probably.
Do, but I'm wondering how we make it.
But if it's for real, I'm not going to read it. You know, I mean, like, I need, like, I need a quick.
Well, I've often, I've often found the people quickest to contribute are the ones that are least prepared to present an opinion, or underinformed.
Right.
Again, it goes back to the fact that we're all educators.
Right. I mean, yeah, I mean, I don't have the answer. I'm just saying, I think it would be helpful, especially for those administrators, you know, to have that.
Yeah, I understand.
So along with Ms. Bailey's comments, the other thing that I was also getting, besides a lot of people texting me, well, my child wasn't shown how to fill out a form, or they couldn't find the form, or et cetera, but was that what education and what training do our staff have to be able to help with this? To be able to help to identify and help if a child needs to fill something out? And I think that, you know, going back to the beginning of the year when we have professional development, this might be something good. And something I just thought of, too, while you were talking about, Ms. Bailey, about parents, you know, and I know that you have the booklet, but how many people are going to read the booklet? But maybe even, like, have the students, the ones especially that got the gold.
You were thinking, I was doing the same thing. Be your best you, how to fill out a bullying.
I'm filling out a form for parents.
You know, and so, right, if I go to our website and I'm looking for bullying, I mean, do I search bullying? Do I, you know, which department is it under?
Right, because it doesn't pop up. You know, I mean, we have, we have a number of things that pop up, but this, that's not, or, you know, there's a specific tab to say, you know, Maryland School Survey, join our team, health and safety, but there's no.
Have you been bullied?
Bullying, you know, whatever.
Would you like to bully? Have you bullied? A lot of this is, though, keep in mind, most of this is generated at the school site.
I understand that, right.
In the classroom, with the counselor, with the people directly involved. And parents aren't supposed to be filling out the bullying form, like.
But that's not the, that's not what the perception is out in the community.
Right.
And that's what I think needs to change. And I know, I'm sorry, I'm totally hijacking.
No, no.
No, it's good conversation.
You know, that's, that's not.
Perhaps we could have, this is the bullying form for parents to fill out for their children as opposed to the children reporting. Yeah, I mean, it's, this is a, you know, since, in the, this, there's always, there's always been unkind interactions between peoples.
Right.
And we are in a time when the most vicious bullies sometimes hold the most prominent positions and are the definition of bullies, because there is an imbalance of power, and then they, they abuse that imbalance, right?
Very much so.
But I mean, honestly, I mean, that, that's a great definition. I'm very encouraged that someone at the state level came up with that, so.
Because it does invite an opportunity to talk about what is, you know, what's unkind, what's insensitive, what's really bullying, because nobody, you know, nobody, the biggest thing is, is that I don't think anybody ever really wants to be a bully. Like, they're, I mean, they're.
Well, maybe some people do.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Well, nobody wants to be labeled a bully? I don't know.
There's underlying, yeah.
But doesn't mean they don't exhibit the very specific behaviors.
Yeah.
Right.
All right. Well, there's, that's just, you know, take it for what it's worth as you, as you do the regulation, but that's just, you know, the perception is somewhat out there, so.
We can always, we can always.
If you're always an educator, Dr. Jaffers.
Right, as an educator, as an educator, we can always do better. And if one person doesn't understand, then we still have work to do, right?
That's right.
But I will tell everybody, please, for the love of all that's wonderful, stay off Facebook. Don't, if you, if, just stay off Facebook. And don't ever read any comment that any. And don't ever read any comment that anybody put onto anything ever unless it's, just don't.
Yeah.
If you want to know what people think, you know, ask your friend to their face, and they'll tell you, and that's like, you know, I don't know. I was hoping that it would all crash, that the metaverse would be the overreach and it would all be done. And Zuckerberg came out, and he was so upset because Facebook doesn't allow tracking on its phone, and he lost $10 billion, and I figured maybe he could create the metaverse and then disappear into it, and we'd all be better for it.
And it hasn't happened yet, so.
No.
Someone else would come along to fill that vacuum.
Just as long as, like, every.
No, I don't, thank you.
We're all hacking up, but thank you.
Nice job. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
All right. I don't need to gavel up, but we're done.
Correct.
So ends Fed Work Session.